I plan to win on economy, national security and family. No one else is talking about families. You have to strengthen the families of the United States of America. You have to strengthen them if you want a strong nation. Because there is hope for America yet. There absolutely is. There's great hope. I have a great vision for a 22nd century America. But we have to move past this stain. The stain of the vitriol, the stain of the rhetoric, the stain of you've got to be so extreme on either side in order to even have a microphone. Or you have to sell your soul to the devil to get on a platform. Give me a break.
This is strong Trump country. And just being honest, it is strong Trump company.
It's God country, not Trump country. God bless each of you. And may God bless these United States of America. Thank you.
Well, hello everyone and welcome to presidential candidate Dr. Roland Roberts. Virtual Town Hall meeting and after party. We are getting ready to have an exciting time tonight. And I'm your host, Dr. Shirley Clark, and I am so at thrill, I can say it, to host this virtual town hall meeting. And I'm telling you, Dr. Roberts is here and he's coming to bless your life tonight. And I'm so excited that God has favored me in this season to be behind such a great man as Dr. Roland Roberts. And so we're getting ready to, we say, we want to say, get this party started, but we've got some more things we have to do. We got to have some family talk tonight. And so I'm excited to have Dr., I think, did Dr. Greshin show up yet? But we wanted to open with prayer. We do, when he shows up, we are going to bring him back up to help us pray maybe later on in the meeting. But we want to start this meeting out tonight with prayer. So if you allow me to pray, and then we're going to go ahead and bring Dr. Roland Roberts up, and we're excited that he is here and get ready to do what you need to do. But let me do this. Before we pray, let me just have you share this broadcast first before we, because once I pray, I'm bringing him up. And I'm telling you, I want you to have everybody in place. So do me a favor. I need everybody to share, like, tag everywhere. Just tell everybody, text somebody, you know what to do with streaming live on Facebook, LinkedIn, YouTube, Twitter and Twitch. I think that's a gaming platform. So we need you to share, 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 share. Come on, I need you to share right now. Another thing I need you to do is to know that we need you to keep the chat alive. We want the chat to stay alive. So when you hear something going on, I need you, that's good. Dr. Roberts saying anything, or we say anything tonight that you know, and you want to do an amen, a shout out on it, or just give some feedback, absolutely keep the chats alive for us. All of the chats are going to be opening, I believe. All of them will have some form or way of chatting. I'm not sure about Twitter, but the bottom line is, you definitely can, yeah, I believe you can, but definite, let us know you're out there the whole while. I need you to share, like, tag. And I said, do your thing. We trust you to make this a try, say, let's trend this thing tonight. And so we thank God for you watching tonight and being with us the entire night. The reality is, when we get through here, we're going to another, I say, a real party, after party outside of this. So let me make sure, I want to make sure we got you, making sure you're tagging, sharing, and you definitely want to make sure you stay the whole while. So listen, let's pray that Dr., I want to make sure, if not, I'm going to go ahead and quickly pray and get this, I said, get this party started, but it's, but just hold on, don't get, don't worry about the word party, because we will party, but tonight, you need to hear from an incredible man of God, that God is raising up, as I said, for such a time as this. So Father, we thank you right now for Dr. Roland Roberts. We thank you for what you're calling him to do. We thank you that tonight is, I said, putting a line, a line in the sand tonight. You're settling the issue tonight. I thank you for elevating him right now. Now, thank you right now for touching the hearts of the viewers right now in Jesus' name. And tonight, it would be successful, this virtual town hall meeting. And we thank you for every guest. We thank you right now for having your way tonight in Jesus' name. Amen and amen. Well, welcome again. So listen, Dr. Roland Roberts is in the house, the second. And I see Papa is down below. So so happy to have you. So you can see him in just a moment, but Dr. Roland Roberts is here. And I don't want to do no long drawn out, I said, bio about him. He's here, he's going to tell who he is, tell what God is doing. So Dr. Roland Roberts, the floor is yours. Your mic.
Thank you, Dr. Shirley. It's great to be with everyone tonight, and I'm certainly glad that you've joined us for this virtual town hall. You know, I grew up in Beaver, West Virginia, and my father is a pastor there and has a Christian school for 35 years. And my mom still teaches at the Christian school there as well. But it's where I grew up. And we sure learned a lot of great values growing up in West Virginia. It was a great life and a great upbringing. We didn't have a lot, but he taught hard work and he taught honesty and integrity and how to love the Lord with all my heart. And I trusted Christ as my Savior when I was five years old and actually went to a Bible college in Knoxville, Tennessee. And then I got into business and started buying and selling real estate and flipping houses and made a lot of money that way. Ended up losing everything, absolutely everything. And I mean homeless. I mean, I had to sell ceiling fans to try to eat that day. I mean, it was, it was, it was as low as you could get. And I was able to get a job and I started climbing back and working at a multi-billion dollar publicly traded company. And we ended up growing that division to over a thousand people. And there was great success. Ended up running a company, becoming the president, CEO of several companies, including manufacturing and technology companies, and then leading in some various capacity, other technology companies, software, hardware, software as a service. And then I got into some cybersecurity and artificial intelligence and technology and started several companies, including a nutraceutical company. And so that was my background up until about 2015. And that's when the Lord really got a hold, God got a hold of this man right here. He got a hold of me. He changed my life. I surrendered everything to him and he has had me lock, stock and barrel ever since. But that, that was, that transformation took me a while to get used to. I didn't know how to live in a, in that kind of a way. And so I did it the best way I knew. I started serving others and loving others and helping others. So I started CEO huddles for to help entrepreneurs and business owners and independent contractors to grow their businesses while keeping the important things, the important things, the main things, family, the Lord, and so forth, their family. So and then I did CEO huddles, CEO cruises. We did, started serving people in inner cities and colleges and universities and even high schools and junior high schools with an entrepreneur workshop. And so we did that all over for several years. And then even went into the CEO camps and started doing international CEO camp for those with Down syndrome. And when we started helping even differently able people be able to create or start or grow a business, it was just incredibly rewarding. And then in 2016, I started in government and started doing some government work. I had no idea how it aligned with the rest of my life, but God was weaving a thread to bring me to where we are today. And in 2017, I addressed the Chinese government and business leaders on the US-China trade war and on intellectual property theft in the great hall of the people in Beijing, China. And then I was working in Africa extensively. And we've worked on humanitarian matters such as education. We have, under Transform Africa, we have Roland College, which is a school, a kingdom school of business and entrepreneurship. We have the School of Divinity and we have the School of Literacy. And so there's different countries that focus on different aspects of our education. But then with many of the countries, we focus on our clean water technology. We have 10 by 10 high boy containers filled with the clean water technology, the best, the cleanest water they can get. It's cleaner than much of our tap water. We run tap water in the United States through the machine and you can see just such a stark difference. And so we're giving them the absolute best technology in the world for clean water and for education. And at the same time, we started helping them with good governance. And I worked on the US delegation to South Sudan for several years. And I've seen that country, the world's newest nation, grow and blossom. And it's messy, just like much of our history has been. And it's not always been perfect or good or beautiful or right, but the, but they wanted peace and they have moved towards peace and they make progress. And so I've been able to see such a growth in that nation. And I remember when the president told me that, he said, you tell me do one, two, three, I'll do one, two, three. And we started talking about the principles of good governance. Fear the Lord and do right by your people. Fear the Lord and do right by your people. And just hammering that point home. And that led me to how God started working in my heart about running for the presidency. Quite frankly, I would come back from Africa or China or another country, and the country that I would represent, I did not recognize, or I would see that we were doing corrupt things in other places and then acting like we're the victims. And I thought, this isn't right. We're not, we're lying to our own people about everything that happens. And of course, the last few years, it was COVID and the origins or vaccines or whatever the issue of the day was, Ukraine, the war and the funding and where the money was going. Nearly on every single issue, we were always being lied to. And, and then I saw that what we did with other countries was, we would say, if you do this, this and this, we'll do that and we'll give you this aid or we'll, we'll remove these sanctions or something. And they would do this, this and this. And then we would say, well, you didn't do it the way we wanted, so we're going to move the goalpost. And that would not sit well with you or I either. If you in your workplace tomorrow, if your employer said, if you do $100,000 in sales this month, we'll give you $100,000 bonus. And the day before the end of the month, now you've skipped family dinners, you skipped a junior's T-ball game, you skipped your daughter's dance recital, you skipped evenings, you skipped family time, you skipped all kinds of things to work your hardest that month. And then the night before, they come and say, you know what? We're really going to bump that up and say, you got to do 150,000 in order to get the $100,000 bonus. You'd be furious. And that's where many countries and people are with the United States today. Even inside of our borders, there's so much contention and division. And so God, when he called me to run for president, he was working on me all these years. And I started to hear it in August, but it was in November of last year that it was, I knew that I knew that I knew that this is what he called me to. And I trusted that faithful is he who called you, who also will do it. And so I wasn't out to make a name for myself. I'm out to make him known, because I believe that righteousness exalts a nation. If we want America to achieve what we know she can be for the 22nd century, for our children and grandchildren and beyond, then we must have a nation that is blessed by God. Currently, we are living in a day and age where good is considered evil and evil is called good. Right, wrong and wrong, right. Right is demonized and wrong is celebrated. And I'm telling you, America needs God. And in America without God will fail. So I'm running for president of the United States to do right by our citizens and to do right by other nations and to do right by the people of the earth, so that we can once again be one nation under God with the blessing of God. Thank you again for joining this town hall tonight, and I look forward to answering the questions.
Dr. Roberts, you're a man after my own heart. I'm telling you, I, when I met you, it was amazing six years ago. And to hear what, it's like, it's a deja vu for me to know that I was sitting in such greatness six years ago. But one thing I do know that there's somebody that knew you before me. And so Papa is here, Dr. Roland Roberts is here. And so I want him to come up and, and Papa is going to share a little bit about you. And then we're going to, so Dad, are you here? I want to make sure we got Dad up really, as soon as I brought him up, he went off the screen. But I want him to come up and talk about you. Let me get these banners out of your face and everything so we can have Dad come up. Maybe he needs to go out and come back in. But Dr. Roberts, you talked about all these incredible policies and things that you want to do for America. And I, it was amazing as I reconnected after six years ago, I met you briefly. So, okay, Dad is here. I don't, I know Dad is on what we consider borrowed time, so we want to make sure we bring his, Dr. Roland Roberts back up. This is Dr. Roland Roberts, senior. He is Dr. Roland Roberts', second father. And I love this man of God, just knowing that he raised him up in the fear of the Lord. And so Dr. Roland Roberts, he's here to just speak to you a little bit about his son. And he's been in pastor, you've been pastoring over 35 years. Is that right? 35 years?
35 in the same church. I pastored for 47 years.
Forty-seven, 30, okay, all right, okay. Lord, just sustain me, okay? And your church name is Victory Baptist Church. And, but also, hey, pastors, y'all need to hear this. He is a sitting right now state senator for West Virginia. He's been elected twice. Don't tell me you can't serve God and serve the community at the same time. So Dr. Roland Roberts, senior, I'm going to give the floor to you and we're going to just, I said, hide out over on the side, so I'm going to bring you and talk about, tell the real story now. The floor is yours.
Well, I will tell you that I'm very proud of Roland and what he's doing to represent the Lord Jesus Christ in a very difficult race, a very difficult time in our country's life. And yet he's a man for that time. We all know that we are, we are living in perilous times, troubled times. We know that we have many needs. It seems like a lot of the politicians are going different directions, not addressing our needs. They're just talking about the same old talking points over and over again. Roland has done a great job all throughout his life to be lead, a leadership role. He's involved in, even as a young child, he would go up and greet people as a small boy, junior age boy, greet people in the church and welcome them. And he's always been a people person, and that's important for a president. You have to have a president that has, you have to have a president that you can be proud of, have to have a president that has international savvy when it comes to challenging times. And we certainly are in those challenging times right now. And the very fact that he says, America needs God, that, there's so much packed into those words and he speaks the truth. America does need God. Very proud of him. He's been through hard times. He's been through good times. And this is not an easy thing for him to do. It's not a thing that anybody should do lightly when it comes to going into a presidential race, especially when you believe that you're called of God to do it and that God will equip and God will bring the people around. My prayer is this, Dr. Shirley, and that is that thousands of people will rally around him, give him the financial backing. He has the wherewithal and the team built up to be able to help something very miraculous occur, but they're going to have to have the financial backing. And so part of my prayer for him is not that God would just preserve and protect him, but that God would provide for his financial needs with this campaign. Let's let him be our spokesman. Let's let God use him in a great way. Let's get behind him and let's make a difference in America through a president named Roland Roberts.
You're on mute. Yes.
Yeah, I've got, you've got people calling here. They're so excited and trying to get on this thing with Dr. Roland. So listen, I'm so excited about your son, like father, like son, as we say. And so, Dr. Roland, we are so excited about your dad raising you up in the admonition of the Lord. And this is shows a good example of someone that didn't give up on your child and see where he's at. You pushed him, you brought him up into the things of the Lord, as he has shared on some of the platforms that's been interviewed. Dr. Roland II talked about how at five years old, he gave his heart to the Lord. And it does work. It does work. And don't give up on your kids. So Dr. Roland Roberts, you have anything else to say, senior, before we let you go? I know you just, we got a little borrowed time. I know you're doing some great things over, by having some tough family time, doing some things. Anything else you want to say before?
Well, I'm honored to serve the people of the state of West Virginia as a state senator. I am in leadership in the Senate and I'm grateful to be able to help our state move forward. And I'm grateful to be able to have some influence in helping our nation to move forward also. And that, it's going to take a change in leadership. It's going to take a person that has, doesn't just talk about God, but knows God. And that, and yet we haven't quite gotten there yet, but I'm praying that it will occur. And I'm thankful, I'm very proud of my son for following the Lord's will for his life and very thankful for every single person that supports him in this effort. Thank you for having me on this evening.
Absolutely. So Dr. Roberts, junior, you want to say anything or two?
I do, yeah. Dad, thank you. I'm so grateful for you and mom and everything that you do and have done my entire life. I'm just, I'm so grateful. And you know, I go back to how he would teach me leadership without even knowing he was teaching, well, he knew he was teaching me leadership. But he would take me when he's making calls to visit the sick or visit people in the hospital as a pastor or going even to counsel people if that was an appropriate setting. He would bring me with him as much as he could to everything. And then whenever we would leave, he would say, well, how would you have handled that? How would you solve that? And it wasn't some great, deep philosophical answer. I thought it was, but it wasn't. But the point was, he was trying to get me to think and to think beyond my, the parameters and my own biases and to see things objectively. And I think that's one of the, it has served me extremely well in international diplomacy for me to bridge all cultures, to bridge all walks of life, not feel threatened by other ideas and other opinions. Loyalty is not the most important thing to me. It's I want people to be loyal to him and that allows us to all work together. So I love you and thank you for being on tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I said, thank you, Dad. I got a new dad. Well, I tell you what, I love it when we bring dads and moms on, because that's the real story. And that's the fabric of, you know, the whole America is built on families. And that's one of the things that you are definitely pushing in your campaign family, you know? And we do know that there, there's just a breakdown and, and we got to get a hold of this. Dr. Roland, this year, no, yeah, this year, early this year, my former executive administrator's assistant, her grandson, 22 years old, killed himself. And I said, Lord, what is it that a young man would take a gun and shoot himself? That he had no hope for, for life? And this is what you're doing. You're providing a safe place. You're hoping for the future. You talked about not the now, it's the future that you're looking at. You're talking about changing generations. And so so many people are looking at the right now, but now you said, let's go beyond the now. How can we start changing things that will affect generations? And I love that about you.
Yeah, no, look, family is the most important. And the, one of the problems, almost every problem people bring to me regarding our nation, whether it's gun control, whether it's people taking suicide rates, whether it's the opioid fentanyl crisis and epidemic, and whether it's the, the social issues that are plaguing and creating so much division in our country today. All of these matters stem from the home. All of these matters stem from the home. And I firmly believe that many of America's woes will be fixed when we start to promote and provide resources to have healthy marriages and have healthy homes. That has not been an emphasis. And just like in business, you get what you celebrate. And it is, we've been celebrating a whole lot of things that are getting us a lot of bad results. And it is time for America to invest in the families of America. The strength of the family is the strength of the nation. The best national security plan is a strong family. I would also say that, you know, I focused on the economy. The economy is the number one agenda item for us, eliminating the national debt. Every, you know, the debt clock that is constantly going on the website that just shows how fast the debt's going up every second. I want that clock to stop and to go in reverse. And that is something that we used on my energy policy to fix. My education plan solves that. It fixes the student loan crisis. It fixes social security solvency. It fixes Medicare solvency. It solves so many problems just on the education. And then the immigration plan is, will fix and solve the forty million, thirty to forty million illegal immigrants currently in the United States and have a worth, a great, efficient process for all of those to be able to come in the front door in an expedited, in an orderly fashion. We have the right immigration plan to win on economy, national security, and family.
But, well, we got, this is, I need everybody to hear this man of God. He's got, I would say, he is, I believe today that he is the David and he's coming with a clear mind. Dr. Robert, one of the things, I'm gonna bring Dr. Gershon up. He came, he was here to pray, but he got stuck in traffic and everything. But, and so I just wanted to join the conversation. I see some are, guests is that things are going on, you know, it's technology. So you all just pray a little bit so before we bring him up. But one of the things you talked about, this whole, where everything that's going on, Lord, Lord, I was looking at everybody's trying to get in. But the fact of the matter, what you, what you about is really bringing wholeness to this nation, redefining this America 2.0. And we needed, Dr. Gershon is here to join us. Come on and open your mic up and just say some things, a word of prayer, whatever you want to say, and join this conversation. You see your mic there?
Yeah.
A man of God, welcome to the conversation.
Thank you, Dr. Sherri Clark, and I've enjoyed everything. I just, I'm like, America has got the right man. Where are the people? Where are the people? I think we need to find people to ride around this right man. Because I believe that we have some kind of people that use Christianity to get what they want. And that's the kind of many politicians we have. That's the truth. But, but Dr. Roland has got the history of being a son of the pastor and, and walking with his dad on counseling or praying for the sick. And I believe that he is the right candidate. And for me, my prayer is that the eyes of many Americans to be opened and the eyes of many people to be opened, that we should all come together and support him. I've already studied some of my leaders. I have a number of churches that God has blessed me around. So some leaders have been saying, "What about the other candidate you used to support? What about this?" I said, "Well, I'm not bound to a candidate. I'm bound to someone who is bound to God's will." Because I'm not a politician, but I support anybody who wants to follow God. And Dr. Roland wants to follow God. And America needs, needs just that. They don't need a pretentious Christian or use the cover of Christianity. We need the real deal, and he is the real deal. And that's my prayer. And I pray that many eyes will be open. And, and I believe that you will mushroom so fast and so quickly when the time hits. You're gonna, you're gonna have miracles of forty-eight hours of recognition. And people said, "Where has he been? This is, where has he been?" So what I want to encourage everyone who is here, do not give up. Do not, some of you have asked me questions like, "Oh, he's not on the list yet." Look, sometimes the last wine is the better one than first wine. Look at Jesus. The, the, the last one was at the end. You know, after everyone has drank the old wine and their new wine just came right at the end, he is a new wineskin. He is a new man. He is the right man for this nation. And I'm happy and that's my prayer in my speech, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, Dr. Gershon.
Yes, yeah. Go ahead, Dr. Roland, if you want to respond, because I want to do a little Q and A in just a moment. So go right ahead, Dr. Roberts.
Well, Dr. Gershon is a great man of God. He's a great leader globally. Influencers follow him, Hollywood follows him, past presidents have followed. I mean, he is in tune with the future, God's future for America. And to be able to glean from his insight. See, I'm not, I don't just run based on what I think. I have to have good counsel. Proverbs gives us that roadmap that in the multitude of counselors, there is safety. When people can nudge me this way and nudge me this way and keep me on the right track here, and why don't you consider this? See, you have to, I have to be able to listen and to receive that counsel. And I am grateful, eternally grateful for men like Dr. Gershon, who freely speaks into my life in that way.
And it's an honor.
Go right ahead, Doc. Go ahead. I just wanted to bring up Brother Frank Beck. We're gonna do a little Q and A real quick and see, let's see if he quick on his feet. So Frank Beck is in the house. He is one of our local coordinators for the National Day of Prayer. And because you know, as a president, you got to be quick. You got to be quick, bro. Right back, welcome to the stage. We're so excited to have you. We've been praying together for years. I am the North Texas Regional Coordinator for the National Day of Prayer. And he is one of our local coordinators, been around for a long time. We connected in 2012, I believe, or 2011. And he has prayer a lot of time up in Prayer Mountain and different places for the National Day of Prayer. But one of the things he does that's extremely well is that he prays with us every month with one of our leaders, there's a retired judge, and we're all praying together. It's a core group of people. We've been praying every, every month. We pray twice a month. And so Frank Beck has just been very active in the community. So I told him, "Come on this stage and ask this man of God something." So Frank Beck, he said, "I think I got my question." So Frank, you got a question for Dr. Roland Roberts?
Yes, actually, it's a twofold question. And good afternoon to you, Roland Roberts. Glad to be here and honored to be here. You want to be careful to get in on a ground floor opportunity. And very happy to see that there is a candidate who acknowledges God in all their ways so that he can direct their path. But I have two very pressing questions. I'm gonna ask them quickly. Question number one, what sorts of plans do you have for racial reconciliation? We're seeing a march backwards in a certain state, which I will leave nameless, trying to, what shall we say, water down black history, let alone history of other people of color. And very concerned about this because it's time, I believe it's the will of God, for us as a nation to be racially reconciled with one another. Because if you have respective persons, as you know, you commit sin. So we want to be very careful in that area. And the second thing that's really on my heart, because I am a pro-life kind of person, we have had at least somewhat of a victory where pro-life issues are concerned. However, the one thing that I'm concerned about in many states is the lack of a consideration for rape, incest, or the life of the mother. I've actually lived this. My wife at the time had a miscarriage. And were it not for the doctors there, she wouldn't have been able to have a baby again, or she might have even lost her life. We waited to talk to our pastor and acknowledge God, get prayed with, then we had the procedure. And of course, now I have a very beautiful thirty-one-year-old daughter living in California. So we praise God for that. But those are the two issues that I would be most concerned about. What sorts of things will you do differently that I must be perfectly frank and honest here? My name happens to be frank, but nonetheless, you know, I need to be very frank and honest with this. I, you know, these things concern me. I have grandkids, I have a grandson that has joined the Navy right out of high school. Not a chance to see him before he goes back on duty. So I'm concerned about kids, I'm so concerned grown children, my, my grandkids. This is vitally important, and we can't afford not to address it. How will you just do something different from basically what your party is doing?
Right. No, I appreciate the question. And that's actually one of the reasons I was running for president, because I don't see a solution from either party or from any candidate on how to reconcile the racial divisions in America. And I think that it is, it is foundational to many of our other divides. Most any other divide kind of goes back to, we fall back to a racial divide. I will tell you this, it is a global problem. It is not just an American problem. This is a human problem because it is a heart problem. This is the, the answer to your question, and what I will do differently is to promote and to empower families, marriages and families. Because racism grows and starts in the heart of people as children. It is coming, it is happening in the home. We can't teach our way out of this. We can't have enough curriculum in schools to tell you how, that you should do this or not do this. People rebel against all of that, especially through school and beyond. It starts in the home. We have to fix America's homes in order to heal the racial divides, to heal the epidemic with drugs, to heal, you know, the, the pregnant, pregnancy crisis that many youth face. And so a strong family is the best way to heal America, because it is across all races. And, you know, even in Africa, there's a lot of racism. And it's not just because of a skin color, because now there are different shades and they do discriminate based on that. But they also discriminate maybe based on tribe or based on which, which tribe you come from and which dialect. So it is a human problem, not just an American problem. It's important for America to understand that. Sometimes we think it's just us, and we've got this weird problem that we can't fix. We can fix this with the help of God, and it starts by people and parents and mothers and fathers being who they ought to be so that they can teach the next generation. You know why this isn't a fancy and a very illustrious answer and policy for either party? Because it takes time. It takes time. We're not going to be able to see the complete victory like I'd like to see in four years to get reelected. See? And we live in a time where leaders only care about the next election, not about transforming and actually helping solve real long-term problems. And that's why China has lasted thousands of years. That's why Japan has the legacy that it has, because it always plans for centuries ahead. We plan for the next quarter. And so to answer the second part of your question on abortion, you know, and it's obviously a sensitive subject in America because it's so personal for so many people. My position on abortion, specifically as it relates to rape and incest, is that when we have those clauses, I want to, A, we have to do better at providing prenatal care, healthcare to pregnant mothers. A lot of reasons people are having abortions is they're using it as birth control. And I am against using abortion as birth control. But, but when you move past that, then there are real issues that people encounter with, with, with rape and incest and, or health, life of the mother issues. And so what I want to see as it relates to rape and incest exceptions is, I don't, I want us to solve the problem if, for those exceptions, but I want the perpetrator held accountable. I, I actually want a life for a life in that situation. Whoever raped the mother to create the life. If we're gonna have to put a helpless baby to death, then I want the perpetrator to also be held accountable in the same way. And so, but we have to do better. Pro-life is so much more than just do you abortion or no abortion. And Republicans must do, regardless of party, must do better at helping mothers in America. The babies are our next generation. We don't have an America if we have no citizens. We need babies. And so if it's too expensive to have, to have babies, and then once you have the baby, it just starts how much it costs. And, you know, we have to support that. And we have failed mothers in America in that way. We have focused on so many other issues, and we have failed the mothers. And it has created this epidemic and this crisis for so many people. I was talking with a healthcare provider in Florida. It was actually the doctor who delivered our son on July 4th of this year, Independence Day baby. It was a sign, hopefully it's a sign to all of America. But when, when she was doing some of the visits, she said, you know, over fifty percent of the women in Florida, and she thinks it scales to the country, that are on Medicaid, do not enter the hospital or see an OB-GYN until they're having the baby. So then it's too late to fix a lot of problems. And then they have not a lot of help or care afterwards. And it's because you may have Medicaid that would pay for it, but there are not OB-GYNs who will accept it. So you have to have some policy changes where if you're gonna be a practicing OB-GYN, you have to accept, you know, thirty percent of your patients, you have, up to thirty percent have to be Medicaid in order to be able to do the others. You're gonna have to make it part of the license. But there are real solutions to that problem. I think it starts, though, with us understanding the real issue, because the way Americans talk about it now, because we just parrot media, it causes pain. And we should be able to talk about sensitive conversations in America
Right.
without it causing pain to people.
Yes.
Thank you for your question, Frank. I appreciate it.
All right.
All right, Brother Beck, I hope you all, did he answer your question well?
Yes, I'm satisfied with the question because, you know, you know, with the, with the answers. Yes. You know, because it's so very important. God is calling us, you know, to reconcile, because, you know, we're all made in His image and likeness regardless of color. This is something that should have been resolved hundreds of years ago. But we, like the dog with vomit, we keep going back to the same place a hundred years ago. Same thing happened. Klansmen, not just Klansmen, but Klanswomen and children marching up and down the streets of Washington DC. And a hundred years before that, the, of course, the absolute folding up of the programs that came after slavery. So we're looking to change this. We're believing God for a candidate who will take the bull by the horns, won't be afraid to discuss the issues, and this sounds pretty good.
Amen, amen. Well, we got Major Da, Daughter here. She's all the way from South Africa. She's the president of M D N T V Live. Welcome, Major Daughter. You have a rapid fire question for the man of God tonight, Dr. Roland Roberts. I'll go ahead and open up your mic and ask the question, because we're getting closer to our time, want to make sure your mic is open. Let's see, I'm trying to unmute you. There you go. Major Daughter, welcome to this virtual town hall meeting with Dr. Roland Roberts.
Well, greetings to everybody. I'd like to say thanks to Gazillion Times, to Dr. Roland Roberts, Dr. Clark, and everybody that is here today. I'm so honored to be part of this. Here is what I have to say before I get into my question. God is interested and very much interested into where America goes. God is interested to see where America goes, because as soon as America goes, that's the rest of the world following. So where America goes, the world follows. And this is not just a cliche or just something we quote every time. It's real. Now, coming from South Africa, Africa, we are interested in your leadership structure. And someone may be thinking, are you not going too far? I'm just wondering, who do you see as your deputy president in your team?
That's a great question.
Already, that is what is lingering in my mind, Dr. Roberts.
I can tell you. I can tell you, it will not be traditional. I just got done answering Frank's question about how to unify the country with racial reconciliation. I believe that there needs to be political and partisan reconciliation. Our country has been divided so much on Republican or Democrat and it's divided families and homes unnecessarily. And there are, there's actually even members that are either independent or even of other parties that I will look at, at taking as my vice president, because I don't need somebody who thinks exactly like me to be my deputy president, our vice president. I don't need someone who just parrots my praises and like a cheerleader behind me all day long. I need someone to challenge my thinking, to challenge my leadership in an appropriate manner and say, we need to think about this. We need to think about that. We need to do it this way. And/or I disagree with you, Mr. President, on how you're thinking about this. I'll take what you do, but this is what I believe we need to consider. And I want somebody to challenge me intellectually that way. And I can't do it if they, if we agree on absolutely everything, then one of us is not necessary. So I'm actually looking at people beyond inside and outside of the party that I'm running on the Republican platform. I'm actually looking outside as well, with very keen interest with some folks that I think will help unite America. It has never been done this way in America before, but it's what I would want as president. And I think it sets the tone for a united America. Everything rises and falls on leadership. Everything in the home rises and falls on leadership. But absolutely everything in the nation rises and falls on leadership. And that will be how, one way that I'll be unifying the nation.
Dr. Roberts, thank you so very much. I tell you, the time is really going fast. Like, we're 12 minutes till closing. So here's what I want to do. And thank you all, all of the guests, just hang out on the stage with us. What I'm going to go ahead and bring, Dr., well, let me just hold on. I've got one more person I'm going to bring up. Maybe I think another one of our team members will be coming. But listen, what I want you to know, if this, everybody was saying, he's the man. He's the one we want in for president. Right now, then, that is wonderful. But here's what we need. We need you to now to help us keep him in this race. And so what I'm going to ask you all to consider, give a donation. Tonight, we need it now. Tomorrow, this week, we need tonight for you to consider sewing into this campaign. I'm looking for, I want to make sure you see everything you need to get this to donate. Let's see. We want to donate now. We want you to donate now. And we want you to be able to give. And let me, because you can give through Zelle. You can give through the website, BMO, Cash Out, and PayPal. Let me see if I can get that on this, on the screen. But we want you to go, you can go to his website, www, let's get that going real quick. And then we'll bring up the other banners. But let's get that, www, we're just rolandroberts.com. We want, what we need is some catalyst givers tonight. We love, you know, we know everybody doing equal sacrifice. But the reality is, my web coach taught me years ago, never count anybody money but your own. That means that there are some catalyst givers here. Some of you want to give more. You want to give half a million. Maybe you want to give 300 million. You want to finance a million. Then we need you to contact, matter of fact, meet us down in the after-party. If not, you need to go to, contact Dr. Roberts at office. Let me put that. And if you want to be one of those catalyst giver, you heard it. I've learned, Dr. Roland, it was one, I have a young man that's in Florida. Years ago, he just heard God to go and do what he needs to do and just obey Him. So if you are one of those catalyst givers, we want to challenge you to go connect with the office, office@rolandroberts.com. And you know, you want to, you know, give at a high level. But the reality is, if you're an individual, a couple, individuals, you can give $3,300. And then as a couple, you can give $600. You can do by website. You can go all I'm looking for. And we're going to bring that up. I don't know why that we, because we know we put that together. But I'm going to put it up in just a moment for you. But the website, bottom line, and the Zelle is also, you can give at the Zelle at office@rolandroberts.com. We really want the catalyst givers to get in the game. That is the max. You can, like 3,300, you can give 600 a couple. We know that some of you can automatically, that's it. That, there's nothing else they can give according to law unless there are other opportunities. You want Dr. Roberts to come in to speak, that he's a consultant. He's a professional speaker. He can come in. And some, you know, that's a way that you can bless his life. There's so many ways. We're going to need to help you to put your money where your mouth feels tonight to get him there. We need 5 million plus. Let me, and I know if anybody have studied this, it's a lot of money goes into this campaign. But here's what we learned. It just takes a few of us doing a little bit to keep this stuff going and keep it going, because we need recurring payments. Some of you can do a $20, a $100 recurring payment for 12 months, or 13 or 14 months. But the reality is, tonight, we need some catalyst givers. We need certain amounts this month. And so all the Bible says, we have not, because we ask not. And so I know you can do it and support us and make sure that this man of God get what we need tonight. Dr. Gershon, I see you trying to, did you open up your mic to say something?
Say that.
I just want to make sure.
One of the key to say you believe in somebody, you have to dip into your bank account. That's, that's a key of belief. Believing is action. So you believe in this man as a man of their hour for such a time as this, you have to give. That's a sign that you believe. So I want to encourage you to just step out like that. It's very important. It's also good for your soul to give.
There are all of the payments opportunity. Exactly. Here's the thing, I've always supported. We always support what we really say we for. And so I just wanted to make sure that you know that this is the time we have to act. There, when there are times, there are differences, you know, that these politicians, when you're running for office, you have to have certain amounts of money. Already know, we, there's over 300 million people in America. And you take 100 million away, you still got 200 million. You just break that down. All we asking the faith base that you get behind. Right now, people are confused. Major Daughter, people are saying, even today, a lady called me from California. She called me and she would, they just don't know who to vote for. It's like, it's like, you know, one lady told me, say, recently, is this the best we can do, God? It's like, is this all we got? A bunch of arguing. And, you know, the reality is, the scripture says where there is a lot of evil works. And so we, I heard all of these comments said, this is the man. And I know he is the one that God is calling to be the president. So I just want to take this moment to make sure you can give. Here's the website, here's Zelle, BMO, Cash Out, PayPal. And you can only give 3,300 if you just like, you want to just sow. And that's, and I was like, Dr. Roland, that's all? I was like, I'm ready to give, you know? But there are ways to be a blessing beyond that. And that's why I asked for the catalyst givers to contact his office. But also tonight, right after this, I want to invite you to the after-party as well. There will be an auction there. And there's a lot of other different ways you can help Africa and do the work that he's doing. So we want to invite you to that after-party and perhaps you can sow at that time as well. But listen, I want you to give. It's five more minutes. So, and we've got a couple of minutes before we close out. We're going to have prayer. So I want you to be a catalyst giver. I know you can do it. This is a time you need to get all your buddies, your pals. I would say, in colloquial language, I know this is a professional, you know, platform, but, you know, your homies, you can't forget your homies. All you girls together and get some money. And so let's support. It'd be great if we can get 1,000 women's to give $1,000. And you see, that's how, that's what, is that a million? Is that a million? It doesn't take that much. It's just everybody giving. So being a catalyst giver. And so I want to encourage you to really give and start. And here's the thing, if you give 1,000, I need you to be a recurring. You can go to the website and select, I want the, for the next, can you just believe God for the $100? You can do a $7 recurring, but I just want you to get in the game every month. So this is for America. This is for my child. This is for my grandchild. You know, put something down every month, plant a seed. How do you break, I break a cycle? You sow a seed. Come on, ladies. How you break a cycle? It says you sow a seed. And so I just want to encourage you all to get behind Dr. Roland. I promise you, we know you can do it. We just want to elevate you to see who you can give your money and sow into. Some of you have been waiting for this moment. And so we want to encourage you right now to bless him and then join us in the after-party. If you say, but Dr. Clark, I don't know about the after-party. Well, what you need to do is to go to Dr. Roland Roberts, rolandroberts.com website. I believe you can still register for this meeting. You will get an email that tells you how to get into the after-party, where we're going to be auctioning off some incredible things. And Dr. Roberts, before we go, I want you to have the last words before we pray. We're going to bring Dr. Marcus up and he's going to pray over you. Would you share something? Do you know right away some of the auction items?
Oh, yes, yeah.
Auctioning and all?
We've got a four-day excursion in Africa where I take them to see Roland College businesses. We graduated 2,451 students last year. One lady only started with two chickens, ended up with 80 chickens, and it was paying the bills for her whole household. And so we just have wonderful stories. Certainly it includes a safari, an African safari. And so we have a lot of things planned, meeting with diplomats and so forth. It's an incredible day. We also have a couple days, two-day experience with me in Hawaii. And we have even things in Las Vegas, dinner, show, time together. And so we've got a lot of different options. But Dr. Shirley, I would just leave the people with this. And I was thinking, as you were saying your last word, but mothers and fathers, you don't have to worry about muting the television when I'm speaking. You don't have to worry about covering your child's ears or saying earmuffs when you see me come on the TV, because you don't know what kind of foul language is going to come out of my mouth. You're not going to have to worry about explaining or undoing something they hear me say or do. You won't have to do that. You won't, I want to be a president and a leader that you can, that your children can look up to, that you don't have to excuse my behavior, but you can look and say, this is the kind of person you can aspire to be. And not just a position, but who the person is. That's what I, the standard I hold for myself. And I'm excited for the people of America, because I do know that God is at work. He's not done with this country yet, but His people will rise up. And those that even don't believe in God, I am a president for all. We will have the greatest scientific advancements and technological advancements and so forth. But as I acknowledge Him personally in my life, He said, the nation will be blessed. Not everybody had to believe, but He will bless this nation. That includes you, every single one of you with me as your president. And so I look forward to that. Thank you all so much for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Dr. Marcus Howard, thank you, Dr. Roberts. Dr. Marcus Howard is here to close us out in prayer. And then we want to meet you down, everybody in the after-party, if you can make it. Listen, we found out that some people down and want to ask you some question on YouTube, they say. So they're going to be in the after-party. And so, listen, again, if you are, go to rolandroberts.com and just go ahead and register for tonight. Meeting is still open and you will get the information how to get into the after-party. And you can ask Dr. Roland Roberts any other question you might have. So we're excited. I think there's a link, a note in, once they sign up. And then Melanie, if you put, I see you put it in the private chat. If you can put it over in the comments and publicly, I put it there, people can get it as well. But Dr. Roland Roberts, thank you so very much for allowing me to host this opportunity to showcase you to the world for the first time on my platform as well as your platform. But just being, it's just a blessing. I have so many incredible leaders here on the stage. But thank you for allowing me to host this. And so Dr. Roberts, Dr. Howard is here. And he's going to close us out in prayer. And Dr. Howard, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Dr. Clark. Thank you for being such a great host. And thank you so much, Dr. Roland Roberts. I thank you for being the presidential candidate that we can be proud of. We can, like you said, we know that when we put our kids in front of the TV and you're on, that we do not have to mute and we do not have to be concerned about what comes next. So thank you, thank you, thank you for being a man who follows God. Let us just bow our heads. Father God, we just thank you right now for your grace, your mercy, your love, and your kindness. We thank you that you are who you say that you are. So we must be who you say that we are, God. We thank you, the Lord, that you have said, the Lord, we can have what we wish for, the Lord. We can, we can say, the Lord, what we want to see, God. So we speak now, the Lord, life, the Lord, into Roland Roberts, the Lord. We thank you right now for covering the campaign, God. We thank you for covering his family, God. We thank you, the Lord, that no harm nor danger comes towards him, God. We thank you, the Lord, that there is a shield of protection all around him, his family, the Lord, and those who are supporting. We thank you right now in the mighty name of Jesus, that this, the Lord, is a move, the Lord, of you, God, that this, the Lord, is your chosen, the Lord. We thank you right now, God, that the resources, God, are not just coming, they're overflowing, God. We thank you right now, God, that there is not a need, the Lord. There is not, the Lord, a desire. There's not a want, God, that shall go, the Lord, unmet, the Lord. We thank you, God, that the windows have opened up in heaven and they're pouring out, God, through the Lord, the people, that they give unto His bosom, the Lord. Oh, God, we thank you right now, that they're pressed down, shaken, the Lord, running over, God, is the blessings, the Lord, in the Roberts family, in the mighty name of Jesus. We thank you for each and every last one, the Lord, that is supporting from all over the world, God. Bless them, God, so that they may continue to be a blessing. We thank you, God, that His heart, God, is to put our nation back on your son's shoulders, God, so that we, the Lord, may be in line, the Lord, with your holy word, God. We thank you, the Lord, that thy kingdom come, God. We thank you, God. We thank you, God, that thy kingdom come, that will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Bless them now, God, and bless us, God, so that we may be able to see the day that we can truly say that we are one nation under God, undivisible, God. We just thank you. In the mighty name of Jesus, we pray, amen, amen, and amen. Dr. Clark, I turn it back over to you.
Amen. Well, thank you, thank you, thank you, Dr. Howard, for that closing prayer and for praying for everyone and the man of God. Listen, I'm so excited that we had this incredible virtual town hall meeting and had so many incredible guests on the stage. Dr. Roberts, this has been wonderful. And listen, everybody, we love you. God bless you. We see you down in the after-party tonight. And so Dr. Roberts will be there. And so any of your questions, anything you want to say, listen, he's, you can touch him. You can talk to him. You know, some people you can't touch, but he's not like that. And so meet us down in the after-party. We got a Zoom room set up for this. So we love you. God bless you. Thank you for watching. And do me a favor. When we, you know, you get through with this, we need you to help us repurpose this. Let's trend this. Let's trend it, okay? Let's get the word out, okay? You know how to do it. So we love you. God bless you. Have a great night.